Let's call an order, the Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting of February 27, 2018. This time let's take a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a few comments to start the meeting. Weather was nice today, spring's around the corner, birds are chirping. If it just stopped raining long enough, I think everybody's getting in better spirits because it's just around the corner, summertime's almost here. We've got a lot of good things going on in the city, I think the positive things. We've got Hobby Lobby coming in at Exit 5, that's positive. We've got development going on on Euclid Avenue, that's positive. I've seen management going in and out of American Merchant Building on Old Avenue Highway every day now, so that's positive, looks like activity's going on. So we've got economic activity going on. We need to stay together as a community. We've got to work through a budget cycle now, it's not going to be easy. Budget cycles are always hard. Don't be emotional about it, let's just look at the numbers, let's let the numbers guide us where we need to go. But we are going to have, again, some hard decisions to make this year. Every year's going to be difficult until we make sure Bristol, Virginia is out of the woods financially. We have turned a corner. We've refinanced our debt, we've spread it out, so now we can afford to pay it as long as we keep the economic development focus going. I think we're going to be fine, but we've got to watch our costs and be very diligent about where we spend our money. So with that said, I think let's just all keep our chin up, keep plowing forward, and you know, it's one row at a time, you've got to plow it one row at a time. Nothing comes easy. Comments for council? All right, city manager?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Quick, Mayor, I want to introduce Nicole Storm. She is here on the front row, she is the new executive assistant for the city. She is a graduate of Virginia Commonwealth University and also has her master's in public administration from Virginia Tech. She has experience lobbying for Albemarle County Schools. She is an experienced grant writer, so she has a lot of talents that we can use for the benefit of the city. And look forward to working with her, and I think she'll be a great asset for us here in the city. I do want to give an update on the animal shelter. I've had several questions in regards to the animal shelter. Really December and January were bad months for building due to the weather, so there really hasn't been much done up there since mid-January or mid-December. They are back on track. We have an engineer in place that is redesigning some things that we had thought we could do, and I think they... We may have overdone what we anticipated, so we have an engineer looking at some things to make things a little more simpler. That, not exactly sure of the opening date of the animal shelter at this point, but it will be open within the next several months.
Okay. All right. All right, with that said, before we can go into any kind of a closed session with the school board, we need the school board to call their board to order, and then we can go into closed session.
Mayor Mumpower, I'd like to call the Bristol, Virginia School Board to order for the February 27, closed session meeting with city council.
Thank you. All right, first item, joint closed session with the Bristol, Virginia Public School Board pursuant to 2.2-3711.a6 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected, parentheses proprietary. I need a council motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated.
A second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Hartley, a second by Mr. Wingard. Let's call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Now, the school board, you need to...
Yes, sir.
Go into closed session.
Mayor Mumpower, honorable council members, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a6 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters: Discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it made public initially the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected, proprietary.
Since you would have motioned, yes, all right, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second. Motion in a second.
Mr. Pleger?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene this executive session were discussed. Please call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
And the Bristol, Virginia School Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, and only public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were considered.
Second.
Mr. Pleger?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Yes.
And with that, we adjourn the school board's portion of the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number two, closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711.a1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, parentheses personnel. And closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711.a7 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, parentheses legal matters. Have a motion.
Motion to go in executive session.
Have a motion by Mr. Fleener, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hartley, please call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, by roll call votes, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, on to regular agenda items, round number three, consider the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 66 Personnel, CC66-55 disposition of balances of leave credits on change of status by caption only. Staff report.
Counsel, at the January 25 council meeting, we had asked the council for an ordinance to allow the city 15 business days to pay any leave credits or any compensation due to employees. Previously, the code section did not give the city enough time in order to accurately calculate leave time and any pay that is due to the employees. This will be a second reading of this ordinance, and I'd ask the council move to approve the second reading.
By caption only.
By caption only.
Move to approve, caption only.
As far as public comment, I don't see anybody signed up for this. Do we have one person?
Oh, no. It's Michael Pollard, 101 Ashley Drive. I signed up for the wrong agenda item number on the ordinance. This is a minor change, and to approve it probably would not require a second go-through. Under Section A, subsection 1, it says separated from city service by resignation, retirement, layoff, or dismissal, but under paragraph A, it says an employee or upon death, the employee's estate. Subsection 1 does not mention death as being an option. So for comprehensive, the sake of being comprehensive, it probably should say separated from city service by resignation, retirement, layoff, dismissal, or death.
In my opinion, the death of an employee is what I would consider an involuntary resignation.
The ultimate termination.
Whereas under A1, I think those items are more of a... More voluntary in nature than the death portion, so I don't necessarily believe that death would need to be outlined under A1 when it's specifically enunciated under paragraph A.
Paragraph A that I see doesn't specify voluntary versus involuntary.
Well, I think it's implicit in that, isn't it?
Well, I would want the...
You want to be that specific, Mr. Pollard, really?
I would want the employee's estate to potentially lose benefits because of the wording of the ordinance.
Well, when you die, there are benefits that accrue to you and so forth and so on, I think, as a matter of course. Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you know, we don't need to fix a wheel that's already been fixed by operation of law and so forth and so on, by whatever, but thank you for... Semantics sometimes can get you just that. It's grammatical as opposed to material, okay?
Well, sometimes paying attention to details can help protect against a potential future city manager who wants to save pennies at the expense of someone's estate.
Well, I mean, you're not going to get unemployment benefits if you're dead. I mean, let's just be real, you're not going to get certain benefits if you're dead. You get insurance benefits if you're dead and so forth, if you're a city employee or any kind of employee. But, you know, you can't, you know, geez, that'd be a great scam though, wouldn't it, to get unemployment or workers' comp and something, and you're six feet under?
Well, you can only die once, so it's only so much of a scam.
Yeah, but you don't keep getting paid when you die once, Mr. Pollard. That's the thing, I'm trying to say, it's really kind of a... It's really kind of a picky.
Our attorney's already ruled on the issue, so let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, see no other public comment, reading of the ordinance caption only?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 66 Personnel, Section 66-55 disposition of balances of leave credits on change of status.
All right, I have a council motion, a second.
Move to approve.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt by council, by caption only, Mr. Hubbard?
Well, yeah, we've already read the ordinance caption only.
Okay, yes, all right. A second.
Did we have to hold on to the reading?
Well, it's out of order there, it should have been... Two items should be first.
Well, this says staff report, public comment, reading of ordinance, council motion a second, council discussion, roll call, adoption of ordinance, council motion a second, roll call.
What we needed was a council motion and a second for the second reading, caption only.
Yes.
Then we have a motion and a second for adoption.
Yeah.
So there's two different votes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not two votes.
So is your motion to...
Approve.
Approve the reading of the ordinance?
Yeah, let's do that. So I move we approve the reading of the ordinance, or adopt the reading of the ordinance. The ordinance, excuse me.
And I'll second that, Mr. Hubbard.
We're adopting it, yes.
Please call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, now on to the adoption of the ordinance. With council's pleasure.
A move that we adopt the ordinance.
Again.
Mr. Hartley makes a motion of adoption, Mr. Hubbard seconds. Any council discussion? Please call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
I gosh, this thing got passed.
All right, on to item number four, consider a resolution granting the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department approval to upgrade from the ALS non-transport license to an ALS transport license with the Virginia Office of EMS. Staff report.
Counsel, I think the chief, yeah, he's still here, but this here is a resolution as, if we go back almost a year now, there have been discussions about whether or not the city should ever be in the transport business of transporting patients from accident scenes and other types of issues, of medical issues. Over the course of this and over the course of the discussions last year, it was brought not only to my attention, but the chief's attention that in order to do this and do it appropriately, we need to have our ducks in a row so that on July 1 of a fiscal year, if we wanted to move into a transport business, that we have everything in line in order to do that, specifically Medicare numbers and things of that nature. So part of that process is changing our license with the Office of EMS, and in order to change our license, we have to have a resolution from council to allow us to change our license from a non-transport agency to a transport agency. And that's the only thing that we're asking for here tonight. We're not asking for anything else, we're not asking for approval for an ambulance, we're not asking to even start transporting patients immediately. This is just starts that process to allow the fire department to get their ducks in a row. They've gone through as far as they can go to this point to get all their licensing and things of that nature, except for the fact, in order to finish out the licensing and get the billing numbers, we have to change our license over from a non-transport to a transport agency.
Where do we stand right now, Mr. Reed? I mean, if we make this resolution, adopt this motion tonight as city council, are we in a position right now to get this licensing and so forth with Medicaid, Medicare and so forth?
And the only other issue in regards to obtaining the license, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, in order to actually get a Medicare billing number, we will have to have a physical ambulance in our possession. Those ambulances, I know the chief had sent me several ambulances that were for sale yesterday that were relatively new, anywhere from 10, eight to 10 years old, in the price range of $34,000 to $40,000. So good-looking ambulances, they have, I think one has relatively low miles if I wasn't mistaken, I think less than 50,000 miles on it. So that's the only thing that Medicare will require at some point, is for us to have an ambulance in our possession in order to get that Medicare billing number.
All right, as far as public comment, we had one person sign for number four, Michael Pollard?
Thank you, gentlemen of the council, my name is Michael Pollard, 101 Ashley Drive. This is, again, an item concerning details, and it sounds like the city manager may have answered this, but I just would like to have that explicitly clarified. With the license, does the city receive any duty to respond, which could potentially come upon the city regardless of practical ability to respond?
We are not authorized to transport any patient unless we have an ambulance. We cannot transport a patient in our fire trucks or in our fire truck, our Tahos. At the moment, there's a duty to respond simply because we have EMS on staff and through agreements with the Bristol Life Saving Crew, they've requested air service on roughly 16 different types of calls, so that anytime one of those EMS calls comes through the 911 dispatch, not only is the Life Saving Crew dispatched, but also one of our fire engines.
But we would not gain any additional duty to respond to a transport call simply because of having a transport license? We would need to have an ambulance in order for that.
You cannot transport unless you have an ambulance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else for public comment? Nancy?
I think not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, reading of the resolutions next.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia approving the City of Bristol, Virginia Fire Department to upgrade from an ALS non-transport license to an ALS transport license with the Virginia Office of EMS. Whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia Fire Department currently possesses an ALS non-transport license with the Virginia Office of EMS, and whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia Fire Department and its city leaders have determined the need for an ALS transport agency for the City of Bristol, and now for be it resolved, the city manager Randall Eads, the city mayor Kevin Mumpower approve the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department to request an upgrade from non-transport agency to an ALS transport agency. Be it further resolved that the City Council for the City of Bristol, Virginia grants the request of the City of Bristol, Virginia Fire Department to apply for an ALS transport license with the Virginia Office of EMS, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council held on the 27th day of February 2018.
What's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve, second.
All right, any council discussion?
I do have one. You said you'd have to have the actual ambulance before you could get the Medicare?
That's correct.
How long, once, do you have any sense of how long? I mean, is that a lengthy process or...
From my understanding from discussions I've had with the chief, the, once you have that ambulance, you're probably looking roughly, what, 60 days, 60, 90 days to get that billing number?
Please.
But if I'm not mistaken, we have got everything submitted that we need up until this point, except for actually having an ambulance in our possession, is that correct?
Yes.
And we've been working on this since, I would say, August?
Correct.
The resolution with this, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the resolution just simply says, should the city manager and city council decide to take that next step to pursue transport capabilities, that we would have the blessing to do so. That's all it is.
Okay. Well, yeah, Barry, I have one question. So how often in the last year or whatever, on average, have you needed to transport someone, but you haven't been able to?
Mr. Mayor, the last time I looked at the statistics, there were probably, I want to say about 100 calls in the past 12 months that an outside agency came into the city and transported because a crew was tied up on two other calls.
So about 10 times a month?
Approximately.
Surrealistically answering Mr. Pollard's question, we would actually be facilitating service to individuals by having the fire department have an ambulance and so forth as opposed to somebody, I'm assuming, coming from Sullivan County or Washington County to answer a call, crew was busy with something else, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir. You know, right now, we have no obligation or means to transport.
Right.
But if we did have a unit and were duly licensed by the state, then there would, I would assume, have an obligation to do so.
And which organizations typically come into the city to do the transport when the crew's tied up and you can't? Who's been responding?
Right now, we have Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department coming in, ambulance service of Bristol, and Washington County Fire Rescue, and occasionally Goodson Kinderhook Rescue comes in. It's a long way.
Any of those 100 transports been kind of critical transports? They should, time was of the essence?
Yes, sir, I would say most likely. Probably not all of them, but I'm sure there were some.
Okay.
Mr. Reed, let me ask you this question, I think this came up, question I had in chief. Transporting from Bristol to the regional hospital, Wellmont, whatever it's going to be called soon, Ballard Healthcare, would there be any issues with the City of Bristol, Virginia transporting across state lines?
No, we've, I think we had this discussion maybe sometime during the last budget session if I'm not mistaken, but there's not going to be any issue in regards to liability or sovereign immunity, it will still be covered under our sovereign immunity laws.
Okay, we don't have to just take them to Abingdon, for instance, and transport, okay? All right.
Thank you, Chief. All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? All right, so we have a motion in a second? Please call a roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, on to number five, consider resolution granting final plat approval of plat number 3-2018, the Falls Phase 2 Lot 25. Staff report.
Mayor and council members, I'm happy that we have two plats that are both relevant to what the mayor had just spoken about, new development happening in the city. Oops, just a minute. The first being the division of new Lot 25 off of existing Lot 22 in the Falls. The property will be addressed at 515 Falls Boulevard and is the site for the new Hobby Lobby store. It's a little better picture there, it is owned, of course, B3. The current acreage of Lot 22 is 21.6 acres, the new parcel dividing off is almost five acres, and the remaining then is 16.7. So the new line being made is right here, carving out of the larger Lot 22 that was created last year. The staff has reviewed with comments and reviewed all the preliminary plat, it went to the planning commission on the 15th of this month, and they approved the preliminary and then the final plat. The final plat is actually in two sheets because there are a lot of easements involved. There's a sewer, and storm sewer on the southern half, actually shows up on sheet two there, southern half of the property, there's a water line easement for BBU here. None of this will hamper the development of the, building will be in this area right here, and parking in this area. So those are the, that's sheet one showing also a utility and landscape easement along the edge here, 10 feet, which will continue along there. This is the cul-de-sac, here's Lowe's down here. So the planning commission has passed it on for you all to certify with by resolution that this new lot be created as a subdivision as numbered on the agenda there.
Okay. All right, seeing no one signed up for public comment, reading the resolution.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia approving the final plat number 03-2018 for the Falls Phase 2 Lot 25. The city council finds whereas the subdivision plat for the Falls subdivision Phase 2 Lot 25 has been properly submitted to the city and reviewed by city staff, and whereas the planning commission met on February 15, 2018, and approved the preliminary plat and the final plat, and whereas Section 50-270 requires that the plat of a subdivision be approved and certified by city council before it can be recorded, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, the council approves and certifies the final plat, plat number 03-2018 for the Falls subdivision Lot 25 as attached in Exhibit 8, passed and adopted by the city council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on February 27, 2018.
Okay, do I have a council second, a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hubbard, second by Mr. Wingard. Any council discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, on to number six, consider resolution granting final plat approval of plat 04-2018, Euclid Avenue Shopping Center replat of Lot 3. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a redevelopment project that has been ongoing, and...
Okay, sorry. And this is Lot 3 that is being divided into two pieces that will allow for development of new building on the property. Part of the existing building, as you can see in the picture of the subway, will be retained on the site, and about two-thirds of that existing building will be demolished. So there is a need to divide the property into two pieces. It is numbered 1315 Euclid, but with the new building, it will be renumbered for 911 purposes. The property is zoned M2, which allows all retail sales. Total acreage is 1.3. The new dividing line will, this is the existing structure, all that's cross-tash would be demolished, the new line will be right here, and as you can see, the resulting size of the lots, .84 acres and .46 acres. And as I said, I think it's just a little under 10,000 square feet of the existing building will be demolished, and the developers will be building in this area here, a new building for new tenants. Because it is a division into one new lot, it did have to come to the planning commission, was reviewed by staff, and both preliminary plats and then final plat, oop, sorry, has been approved by the planning commission, and now you all have a resolution to approve this as subdivision number 04-2018.
All right, no one signed up for public comment, so reading the resolution.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia approving the final plat number 04-2018 for the Euclid Avenue Shopping Center replat of Lot 3. The city council finds that whereas the subdivision plat for the Euclid Avenue Shopping Center replat of Lot 3 has been properly submitted to the city and reviewed by city staff, and whereas the planning commission met on February 15, 2018, and approved the preliminary plat and the final plat, and whereas Section 50-270 requires that the plat of the subdivision be approved and certified by city council before it can be recorded, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, the council approves and certifies the final plat, plat number 04-2018 for the Euclid Avenue Shopping Center replat of Lot 3 as attached in Exhibit 8, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on February 27, 2018. twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
All right, I have a council motion and second.
I'll make the motion, will you accept this?
I'll second.
Make a motion, Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Hartley. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this was presented to council about three months ago, I voted for the nine hun, I said I thought it was comfortable with nine hundred thousand and no net loss, because it was going to be an urban renewal project, is the way I looked at it. It was going to be urban renewal. They were going to tear down some ISOs on Euclid Avenue and so forth and so on. I missed the last meeting, I guess, when they voted because of my father had an incident that took place. But the thing that concerns me is I hear tonight, and I can't imagine how more unsightly it would be to put a new building in two spaces, you know, maybe you all know what I'm talking about, where the Marine Corps, the Army, they used to be, the comic book place or the baseball card place, but they're going to leave Subway. And this is what was told to me, and I don't like being lied to. Subway hasn't, we're not, these people aren't even going to deal with Subway. They don't let Subway close to them. Those were the words of some of these individuals. And now, surprise, 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 they're going to keep Subway as a tenant, which is going to help them pay their rent and so forth and so on, but they're going to get them nine hundred thousand dollars back from the city. Can you imagine what a messed up ISO is going to be when you've got one old building that are all hooked together, and this old building, new building here, old building. Wow, that wasn't what I was sold on. That wasn't what I was told about. So my answer tonight is, what's changed? Has somebody figured out a way to hedge their monies? Sounds like it to me. And I don't like double dealing and that kind of dealing. Don't want any part of it.
Did they have, make any mention as to how they were going to remodel the subway to make it blend in with the new building?
I haven't heard any of those plans. They haven't submitted the site plan for the new building yet.
Okay.
You pulled, you pulled it up here just a minute ago, I think, Mr. Morgan, on the video here. You showed what they anticipated, the same Subway building. They're not going to tear that building down.
No, no, I bet you can put a facade on it.
It is a facade. This is another facade.
You can change it.
Yeah, this is another facade we've had in Bristol.
They wouldn't move, was the problem.
City Manager, you got some input?
I do. I've had discussions with Kelly Graham and Katie Moore in regards to that, what happened during process and negotiation. Subway worked it out with Mr. Moore and Mr. Graham that they would stay at that location. Now, it's correct that Subway is going to stay there, however, they are going to go in and fix the facade of the building so that it matches the new building that's going to be next to it. So the initial plan was to have three new restaurants at that location. But now, since, um, what I can say is, based on negotiation, Subway's going to stay where it's at. They will keep Subway. Part of that building will be torn down. The new building will then, the Subway will then be coordinated to look exactly like the new building as well.
You were in that discussion, Mr. City Manager, and you're younger than I am. Your memory probably serves you as well as mine does. One of those individual's names that you said, said, "These people don't want to be near a Subway." That was, that was told to this council and yourself. So, you know, if you're going to come in here with a proposal to city, and you don't have all your ducks in a row when you first come in and you represent something to us, and then you change the game, you, I consider it a lie. And I can't vote for a lie.
Well, it's of my opinion, when they first approached us, they need to know our stance on it with their proposal, what they was wanting to do. Unfortunately, things don't always play out the way we would like for them to play out, and you have to make adjustments, and things get altered along the way. You're talking about property, leases, building, and this is not something you do overnight. You can't lay this all out on paper and think that it is going to turn out one hundred percent the way you lay it out.
Well, don't come in here and say it to us.
Things are always going to be altered.
Don't come in here and tell us something then. That's not true. And the bottom line is, I think it's a breach of contract. It's a misrepresentation of the material terms of what we gave them nine hundred thousand dollars for, period. That's not what was discussed up here, and now the game's changed. Sorry.
They did tell us. They said that Subway wouldn't leave. They had a lease, and they weren't willing to break it.
Did you not hear what they said, that there's no, from your buddy, that he said...
Everybody that I disagree with is my buddy.
Well, you're, this is your buddy, and he said, he said...
I've got more friends than I even know.
Subway wouldn't come, they wouldn't, these people that were coming in here wouldn't want a Subway near them. And it is your buddy.
Well, they probably wouldn't want a Subway, but unfortunately, Subway has a very strong lease, and they're not going nowhere. So this project either moves forward with Subway there, or it dies.
Did you hear the representation, Mr. Wingard, or did you not hear what they said up there in the executive session?
I heard what they said.
Okay, there you go. But I didn't miss it. I didn't make that up.
But the bottom line is, things change.
Okay. But when we voted this and said this and so forth, that wasn't, the changes weren't talked about, until this council got, when I wasn't here.
Anybody that knows anything about building knows that there's change orders that takes place on a regular basis. Nothing is set and stoned day one.
I forgot you're a builder. I forgot that. I'm sorry. I don't know anything about building.
Stay in order. All right, any other council discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flainer?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, number seven, discussion on investment policy.
Counsel, I'd respectfully ask that this be tabled at the moment. There were two agendas that were printed. The public agenda did not include the investment policy. That is a, Ms. Harris, the treasurer, was going to present that investment policy, and that has not been yet turned over to me for it to be presented. I was going to hold just a quick session on the investment policy, but since it was not on the public agenda, I'd ask for you all to table that at this time.
There's nothing to vote on. We can, we can just move on. We can just move on to number eight. All right, number eight, discussion on the health insurance.
Counsel, it's that time of year again, by April first, I believe is the date, we have to notify the local choice as to the type of policies and that we will be providing to our employees over the next fiscal year. What you have in front of you right now are the current rates that are highlighted for monthly amounts. This is based on the total cost for what a single, single plus one in a family pay on a monthly, city and family pay for health insurance, for a five hundred dollar deductible with comprehensive dental, one with preventative dental only, and then with a thousand dollar deductible. So you can see the price differences here, and this is what we currently have. If we go to this next page, that didn't blow up like I thought it would, sorry. Currently, the local choice has four options for localities to choose from when it comes to deductibles for their health plan. They have a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, five hundred dollar deductible, a thousand dollar deductible, and then a high deductible plan, which is twenty-five hundred dollars. And the local choice, that's the only options that they have. They do not have any other higher deductible plans. So these are the current rates. We've had a five point three percent increase in rates as compared to what we're paying from last year. The, I do not have the numbers yet together as to how that, the cost of these rates will be split between the city and the employee at this point. But we need to go ahead and start thinking, because over the next two council meetings, we will have to make a decision as to which deductible plan we want to offer employees. Are we going to stay with the five hundred and the one thousand, or are we going to potentially get rid of the five hundred and have the thousand only, or just have a high deductible plan? I can tell you, in conversations I've had with the school board, the school board wants to stay at the five hundred and one thousand dollar deductible plan. If you recall, last year, the school board wanted the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible and the one thousand dollar deductible plan. But at the moment, they are, they want council to stay at the five hundred thousand dollar deductible. Furthermore, it's too late at this point in the game for the school board to pull away and do their own insurance plan. So whatever city council chooses is what they will ultimately have to stay with at this point. But I'm just letting you know what the school board's desires are at this point. Over the next several weeks, we will determine a ratio of what the city will have to pay and what the employees will pay, and I'll be presenting that to you here in the future. If you will turn, there's an additional, I think, ten pages. These are the localities. There's over four hundred and forty localities or government agencies that are part of the local choice. That is from Allegheny County Schools, BVU, Franklin City Schools. So it's several different localities throughout the state, a total of four hundred and forty localities that are members of the local choice. And next fall, we will send out an RFP for insurance services. I know there's been an insurance company that has approached the school board that's based out of Bluff City. They represent several businesses locally that may be a viable option for the city in the future, but we'll do that through an RFP process in the fall.
Mr. Reeves, the last time you presented a budget to us, a proposed budget, and if I understood you correctly, there is a three percent increase. Did I hear that right, in insurance this year?
Five point three percent.
Five point three, I'm sorry. So, what does that translate into per employee that city taxpayers will be paying?
Well, if you look at the difference, let's just take a single person for a comprehensive dental plan. It's five hundred and ninety-two dollars is what they're currently paying on a month this year, city and employee, whereas it will go up to six hundred and twenty-two dollars in this upcoming fiscal year. So it's a thirty dollar increase for a single person on the five hundred dollar plan. For the one thousand dollar plan, it is an additional thirty-one dollars. So it's an increase of roughly thirty dollars on both of those plans at this time.
And is that split fifty-fifty between the city and...
By law, the city has to pay eighty percent of the single, the single plan. So we would pay eighty percent of, well, this year, we're paying eighty percent of five hundred and ninety-two dollars for a single. And then after, beyond that, it's up to the localities of how that's split.
And it's, you said it's going to five point three, so we're going to be paying eighty percent, single payer, if we're single pay, five point three percent more on our portion of the eighty percent?
We would pay roughly...
Eighty percent more for us.
Yeah, it's more for us. It's eight...
Oh, you're shaving the five point three down to eighty.
Yeah, eighty percent, that's four percent.
That's still subs, how many employees?
Oh, yeah.
We're talking, that's with school system and so forth, we're talking...
With everyone involved, we're looking at close to seven hundred employees.
So what percent of the employee base of seven hundreds in the five hundred plan versus the thousand?
At that point, right now, do you have, yeah, Mr. Radlin has those numbers.
Let's see, I'll give you the breakdown. We have, Ms. Henderson, certainly correct me if I'm misspeaking here, in the five hundred plan, we have a hundred and sixty-six employees. In the, that's the comprehensive, one thousand comprehensive, one forty-six.
So you're looking at about fifty-fifty, a forty-nine percent, and fifty-one percent. That's city employees only.
It's fifty-fifty.
And let me, okay, if it's family, they, as an employee, pick up a hundred percent of the family, if they decide to add them on?
No.
No?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. How much do we pay of the family part?
Well, for this, this year, we're paying roughly, on the family plan, we're paying, Gene, if you don't care to go back to the first page. You can see that if you look at the fam, or we'll take the Key Advantage five hundred, that very first column, the family plan costs total fifteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month. I don't know if you can see, but over there in the next set of columns under the city shares expenses, we pay seventy point two eight percent of that fifteen ninety-eight, which is eleven hundred and twenty-three dollars. The employee pays roughly twenty-nine point seven-two percent, which is four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So, and that's, is that factoring in the five, that's going to be going up four percent, basically?
That's going to go up five percent, so that costs...
Eighty percent of five, of whatever it would be, as Mr. Hubbard said.
Yeah, four percent.
Four percent, yeah. So it's going to go up, if they do family, if they do family, we're talking about just that alone with the four or five percent increase. We're talking a substantial amount that the city is bearing the burden for family plans and so forth.
Under that scenario, Mr. Flainer, the maximum cost to the city would be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, cost increase.
Cost increase just for city employees, that's not counting the school board at this point in time.
Correct, correct.
So we don't know how much the school system's going to be on top of that.
Well, they take it out of their budget.
Well, our, we pay their budget, basically.
If we're not giving them an increase, we're not paying it.
It's going to be probably roughly the same, somewhere around one eighty, two hundred to go, a few more employees.
We're in the process, I'm sorry, of reviewing budgeted amounts, vacant positions, and, and what is available within the existing budget that could potentially offset some of that increase.
Well, let me ask you, we're, we are required by state law on a single payer plan to pay eighty percent. Are we required to pay seventy-two percent on the family plan?
No.
No. So that is something that could be renegotiated and negotiated when it comes budget time, as far as the share of who takes that on. Is that accurate?
Right.
All the way down to zero.
We make that decision. We don't make that decision with insurance company.
Okay, I'm just saying, I understand.
What is it currently? What is it currently?
Currently, right now, the city is paying seventy, on a family plan, five hundred, is seventy point two eight percent.
And we're not required to do anything other than for the, the difference really would be, we have to pay eighty percent of a single. But if they elect the family, we'd have to figure out what the difference in cost would be if we decided that they have to eat that cost. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Any other council questions or discussion?
I think at some point, when do we have to make a decision on this?
By April first.
This might be a good thing for one of the topics during our budget work session. I mean, because it, to have some time to look at the numbers and see how it fits in with the rest of the budget as well.
One of those work sessions will include salaries and benefits. Well, I'm not sure if it's going to be on the seventeenth or, I can't remember the other dates off the top of my head, but one of those sessions will include salaries and benefits.
Well, you already, you've already said you'd like to see a two percent raise for city employees, plus now you're talking about this increase in healthcare costs. So realistically, we're talking, what you're already proposing is an exorbitant increase for the taxpayers of the City of Bristol, Virginia.
If the city takes up the entire share of the cost and leaves things as the current ratios are set, you're looking at a total of probably close to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a three percent increase across the board, plus the cost of the health insurance.
Thank you. And we've got four weeks, basically.
Correct. We just received, we just received these rates, we just received these rates a week and a half ago, I believe?
Yes, that's correct.
A week and a half ago from the local choice.
So we need to see the demographics from the current pool and population, how many's in the single plan, how many's in single one, how many's in family.
We've actually already got some preliminary numbers worked out with different scenarios that I can present.
What the current dollar amount is the city pays?
Correct.
And what the new amount would be, everything being equal, and then what the recommendation would be.
We've actually, we've actually already worked those numbers out to a degree, but we want to go back and fine tune them before I present those tonight.
How about health risk? If somebody has health, pre-existing conditions or health conditions, do their rates go up?
No, they do not. I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I just ask, I mean, it's fine if you don't, they do not go up.
No, they, they don't go up, and they just, they can't pick and choose as to who's going to have...
Thanks to Obamacare.
What sort of rates, so.
All right. All right, any other questions for council? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, presentation of the fire study report.
Counsel, I previously sent you all a draft of that fire study report. The fire board will be here. There won't be anything here to present, because that's in draft format at the moment. It has not yet been finalized. It has been approved, but not yet finalized. There will be some technical revisions to that fire study board, nothing substantive. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at that yet, but there were several things that were brought to our attention, and one of those items we kind of touched on tonight previously with... on tonight previously with ALS transport, that the fire board believes that we need to start considering looking at EMS transport within the city. There are other items within the city that we need to consider, but the fire board wants to present those findings to council on March 27th, and they will come in with a full presentation for council at that time.
Okay. All right, any other questions from council on that? All right, number 10, discussion on real estate for sale?
Yes. As council is well aware, we put out an RFP back in the fall for an auctioneer and a real estate agent to start marketing certain parcels of property within the city. What the council has before you is 85, I think 85 or 86 different parcels. I will say the council auction and Evans and Evans Real Estate were very thorough in how they proposed parcels of property to the city. And with the help of Kelly Miller, we've printed that for you all today so that you can see exactly which parcels have a physical picture, plus their tax assessments and everything as well. And you can compare that with, I may not have sent you all the email yet, but there is a document that lists potential sales prices for all those parcels, if I'm not mistaken. So at this point, we've met with Dwight Counts and Tim Carter with Evans and Evans roughly two weeks ago, and based upon their recommendations, you will see in the top left-hand corner of each one of those parcels of property, it will either denote realtor auction, or it could be denoted as BVU property, that I'll have to clarify whether or not that's currently BVU property or whether it's city property based upon the split between the city and BVU. So at this time, we will be choosing from those parcels of property, a number of those to either go to auction or to go ahead and put on the market with a real estate agent to get these properties sold.
So this column to the right of suggested price column, it doesn't have a header at the top, that's their recommended price to market?
May I?
Yes, okay, it is.
So it's a real estate agent's recommended price?
That's correct.
Any other questions from council on the forms with the study this, obviously?
So what's the, what's the next step in this process?
The next step right now, you know, unless there's any major heartburn from any of the council members in regards to any specific piece of property, I'll be choosing which properties will go ahead and start marketing. I know that there are several pieces of property, especially Clear Creek, where it's going to be my recommendation that there would be a clause in the contract that requires a home to be built within so many number of months. We're at a point in the city where if the prices for some of those Clear Creek lot are sold as is, that's not going to do us any benefit on our tax roll. So we need to get homes being built, and to get the benefit of these lower prices that have been suggested, I think it'd be appropriate to put a clause in there that you build a home within 18 to 24 months after purchase.
Mr. City Manager, realistically, if we're going to do auctions on any of the properties, we need to do it with recourse. All the sales of a property need to at least match our tax assessed value before, in other words, we're not going to have people come in here and basically swipe it for, you know, 50 cents on a dollar and so forth and so on, whether you're a developer or whatever you may be. And so I would like to make sure that Evans and Pritchard or our auctioneers understand that, and we set before we do this, everyone is in agreement to set a base price because, you know, this is not going to be a fire sale for people's benefit, it's going to be a sale for the benefit of the people in the city of Bristol, Virginia. And I just want to, you know, make sure that that's understood, and there's a record of what I'm saying tonight, that we don't have anybody come in and, like I said, think that they can come in at an auction and pay $10,000 for a piece of property worth 100 grand. It ain't going to happen, and we can make sure in the contracts that that's stopped.
And that's part of the reason for some of the conditions that would be set on the sale of these properties. As I said before, you don't want to sell a piece of property and just get it on the tax roll and do nothing. You know, we, we want these properties to be sold, and at the same time, we want to build up the city, build up the tax base, and get people to move into the city if they can get a price on a decent lot.
Well, the starting price is fair tax market value for anybody who wants to buy. Whatever down here in the books is a fair starting point. Anything less than that? No. I don't think it's even constitutional.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not in the business of giving stuff away, but this is assets on the books, that the city does need to liquidate, it doesn't do us any good having it on the books. I mean, quickly adding up, there's easily $2 to $3 million worth of assessed value property sitting here in front of us. So if you look at a piece of property that's going to be raw land and then turned into something of value, you know, that you could take that, probably multiply it by 5 to 10 by the time someone was to develop that property, so that $3 million could easily turn into $30 to $40 million if it's done properly, right? So that's what we got to make sure of, right? Because we want that $30, $40 million of value, because that's where the tax base and the tax, you know, stream of money comes from for the city. So we got to make sure we do it right, and if someone wants to, you know, bid $200,000 on something that's worth 1.2 million?
Forget it.
You know, forget it.
Yeah.
We'll hold it to the market, bears the fair price for it.
Amen. Why should somebody else get the benefit of a break on property when other people in this city have lived here for 50 years and paid taxes for 50 years and improved their property, et cetera, et cetera? But some people that are developers come in and get a discount because they're going to develop. Now, that's, that's not, that's not the Bristol that we're going to have going forward. That may have been the Bristol that passed.
But I think through this, we're going to find that some of these properties are going to move, and they'll move fast.
Some will.
They're valuable. And some are going to, some are just going to be like, too big, too much money, you know, nobody's going to want them maybe. So we're going to learn from that, and then we got to decide, what are we going to do with that? Do we need to parcel that up smaller to make it more valuable? What do we do with that property to make it valuable? So we got to learn that through the process.
But there's not, Mr. Mayor, there's not a school and a jail and everything else included in this, is there, Mr. City Manager?
No.
I don't think so.
Oh, no way. If you sold it all at a praise value, you're probably talking $3 million.
If Archie had helped, he'd have some of his money.
If I could get my friends to bid on it.
All right, any other council questions or comments?
Hey, Mr. Hubbard, you, you know what I'm talking about? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't, I deny anything.
I don't blame you for denying, I'm just saying you know what I'm talking about.
All right, we're moving on to consent agenda. Do I have the pleasure of counsel to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Approve the thing, approve the consent agenda as it is.
A motion by Mr. Flainer to approve as written.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hubbard.
We agree on this one.
You're my friend.
Any council discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. We've got Renee Hunt, I think, signed up for non-agenda.
Hello, my name is Renee Hunt. I live at 20 Jackson Lane, Bristol, Virginia, and I've lived in Bristol, Virginia all my life. I'm here tonight, it's not on the agenda, I thought it would be, but I'm here tonight about the city jail. I think we need to find other options. I don't see us, I don't see why we would have to give up our city jail that the citizens of Bristol are proud of to Abenon Regional. When, and yes, it's, it's a lot to cost a jail, but what about remodeling? What about taking the city jail that's across the park, walkway of the sheriff's department, making it a women's jail and having more room for the men? How about sending, if they're, got time and it's a year or more, send them on up the road? And quit feeding them, housing them down here in Bristol. Only keep the ones that's got short time. I just think there's other options that the city needs to look at before we send their sheriff's department up the road. And they too have families, and yes, I am biased, I have a daughter now that works there. And this, this upset me quite much. We have given up enough, y'all have wanted to cut firemen, y'all have wanted to cut different, different places. We've, I've been down here before over the sheriff's department, before my daughter was a deputy. And I just appreciate if y'all take time and find other options and to bring to the table, and I'll definitely be here in, in all the city council meetings to hear the other options. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Hunt, I came up with an idea, I was talking to someone the other day, why don't we, I think what we need to do in Bristol, you know, if you drive down Sullivan County roads, you see somebody picking up trash on Saturdays or weekends?
There you go.
And they've got a little thing, an orange jumpsuit on, and says, "I'm convicted of a DUI," right? So you know they're picking up trash. So instead of putting a lot of our people over here for theft offenses and so forth, let's put them in an orange suit or a striped suit, and they pick up trash instead of going to jail, and it says "I'm a thief" on their back and in front.
There you go. I don't have no problem with that.
In other words, there's ways we can lessen the population here.
And make our city look better.
And the reason they're not moving up the road is they don't want them up the road because they have to pay for them up there, that's why. I mean, it's way overcrowded. And, and I, you know, it's...
But yeah, I mean, our city could use some sprucing up, put them out there to do, to do some cleanup and picking up trash and brush, and, and, I mean, I see them out sometimes at certain places, but, um, yeah, that would be a great idea.
I mean, I think that would curb thievery. I mean, they used to hang people for stealing a horse, and, you know, and people stopped stealing horses because they didn't want all everybody with a basket lunch out here watching them get hung. So, you know, we have ways to shame people into doing the right thing.
But there are people in the projects and all over, that, not just the projects, but everywhere, that don't have a car. And if they have a loved one in prison, in jail down here, whether it's brother, sister, cousin, niece, a friend, whatever, boyfriend, girlfriend, they don't have a way to get all the way up to exit 23. Now, I mean, you know, their children don't get to visit whoever may be incarcerated. And I think, I'd just like for the city to try to find other options. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
And I will say, I have, I have personally talked to the, several of the sheriff's staff on this topic, and I have asked for options, and I think they've, they've delivered some options. I mean, they're, they're not blind to the possibility of the jail having to be shut down because of financial means, but there are options. You know, there are options. One option is some of the prisoners go on home assignment, right? There's a cost to that, right? So there are options, it's been mentioned more than once. So we welcome the options, but the options from the experts have to come to us, right? The options from the sheriff's department and the management of the sheriff's department has to come to us through the city manager. What those options are, they should be laid out in total cost over a time period, not just a short-term look, you know, because we're talking a decision like this is a long-term decision, it's got implications for 20 to 30 years, whether you build a jail or move prisoners to another location. So there's lots to consider, and lots of financial dollars are tied to all those decisions. So, so it's got to be considered carefully, and I know Randall Eads is going to do that, but he, he do, he does need to come with options, and, and a dollar item tied to each of those options, and a recommendation on why he selects the option he recommends.
Home electronic monitoring isn't cheap, and what gets me and surprises me is people that are the powers that be. And it's not this council, it's people that are putting the people in jail, it's the judges and so forth, I've said it before, don't mind saying it again. Wow, and even the sheriff of the jail, why aren't these ideas been floated before? I mean, why now are we having options? Because this was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but now we're getting options? We've got possibilities? It's ironic that, it's amazing that you come budget time and people come out of the woodwork with options. And where were the people trying to save the money for the taxpayers a year ago, two years ago? And the bottom line is, it didn't serve their interest to do that. So that's the problem.
Well, like it or not, politically, it's a hot potato. I don't care how you look at it, so people want to ignore it. They want to kick the can down the road because it's a political hot potato, because you're talking about the sheriff's department, right? Well, we're past the political hot potato. We're talking millions of dollars that the taxpayers are having to foot now because we got a jail that's overcrowded. So it's past the political hot potato. You know, reality is setting in to this city financially what that means to keep doing what we're doing. So we cannot keep kicking the can down the road. If we do, now we're responsible for what the outcome is. So we do have to come up with some decisions.
Well, Mr. City Manager...
And this is not going to be an easy one.
Let me ask you...
This is going to be one of the harder ones.
Mr. City Manager, now with this additional request for $400,000 that the city council hasn't approved yet, I, I would say they will, most will. What is now the city's contribution if you include the $400,000 into the city jail?
At the moment, you're, I think, with the additional $400,000, the city would be putting in roughly...
$3 million?
About 3.2.
3.2? We're putting in more than the state gives us.
That's correct. And then the current budget for the sheriff's office is roughly $4.6 million, $4.7.
From?
From, total.
Okay.
And, you know, I want to kind of follow up on Ms. Hunt's comments, some comments of council here in regards to options. I believe Ms. Hunt's comment in regards to that annex that was built at the jail at some point, I think that's a viable option. I've had conversations with the sheriff, I think he's going to look at every available option in regards to the jail, and he'll be able to present those to me as I discuss things with the regional jail as well. But ultimately, it's not up to city council, it's not up to me, and more importantly, it's not up to the sheriff as to how people get punished. It's up to our Commonwealth attorney and our judicial system as to how people get punished. Our sheriff has just been tasked with housing individuals, and he has to do whatever the courts tell him to do. So, you know, the sheriff has just as much to lose in this as anyone. He does a good job, he wants to do a good job, he wants to do what's right. But ultimately, the decision on how people are punished, it's out of our hands to a degree. So it's a, when, when people come with options, we can hear those options, we can suggest those options, but at the end of the day, those options, some of those options are not our choices to make.
Well, like you talked about making an annex across the street where the old police department used to be, you're still going to have to put bars in there, you're still going to have to make it compatible, you're supposed to put restrooms in there, you're still going to have to make it compatible with DOC.
You would still have to...
And that's not going to just be cheap.
It's going to be a jail study which is required, and the jail study's probably going to run you anywhere from $50,000 to $85,000.
Just for the study?
Just for the study.
I think they've done one on it and determined that they couldn't remodel it to the current standards, is why they haven't done it.
I think that was done...
Yeah, it's been five, six years.
Yeah, maybe longer than that at this point.